Meeting for the month of June, if we can call the roll.
Mr. Eisbar?
Present.
Mr. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Seifert?
Mr. Pastorek?
Here.
And Mr. Freystofer?
Present.
Mr. Moss? And Ms. Shamino. So we have quorum.
Thank you, we have a quorum. I'll entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda as distributed.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Posed by nay. And unless there are objections, or is an objection, I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes in group, the minutes of the regular session May 22nd, 2025, the minutes of the executive session May The minutes of the executive session, May 22 of 2025. And minutes of approval of the claims of June 12, 2025. May I have a motion?
Don't move.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Posed by nay, and we're moving right along. Financial report for May of 2025.
Yes, all lines currently are spending within normal budgets, other than the ones noted on your report from previous months. We had our exit conference for our audit on Friday, and everything went well. I just, a couple hours ago, submitted the report to GFOA, so that is done. And huge checkmark off my list, to be honest. And everything went well. Nothing was found. Great work by the, all the finance department. And I was very pleased with everything. For my first time through, without my right-hand guy, Mr. Dave, so it was well. Carol did a great job helping out. Her first time through as well, so I was very pleased with everything. And Ben sat in with us as well. And Crow did another great job with everything, so it went well. Onto 2026 budget. Doesn't slow down in our office at all. They had the budget workshop was, took place on May 29. I will also be attending another workshop, when I get back from vacation, on the 11th, I believe that is, on Friday, July 11. I also had put a timeline in your packet as well. That is going to be adjusted from normal. And I actually just got off the phone with Controller's Office. And a really, I'm trying to find my timeline here. August board meeting, I initially have on here as a public hearing. And I'm not quite sure if that's going to take place, but I will find out a little bit more on that after I talk with, we're going to have a meeting with them, probably sometime in July, because was having a binding review this year. Things are a little bit different. And I initially thought we would have our public hearing in August. And after talking with them, I just literally got off the phone, it was I came down here. That might not be the case. So we're finding out a little bit more information for that. And I will let everybody know if that's really going to be the case, as I thought. I will be getting more reporting in, as the month goes along in July, to help with figuring everything out for the 2026 budget. The maximum levy growth question has been set at 4%. And we're just going to have to, I don't feel all the Senate Bill 1 is going to affect us for 2026, as much as it will 2027, 28, 29. So I think next year's budget will be as, as normal as can be, I should say.
Are we still planning to go in front of the City Council in September?
They had us, I believe, part in September, part in October, were the dates I think she had sent on that email.
Late October, excuse me, late September or early October.
Yes. Yes. Believe, that's all I have.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the financial report for May?
Don't move.
And any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye, please?
Aye.
By nay? Okay, let's move to the approval of claims.
Yes, claims today are $292,000. And high dollars, Systemwide Electrical, just over $58,000. And insurance, employee insurance claims at $41,000 as well. Small run today.
We'll pass that around for signature. Can I have a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
And a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Posed by nay? I know David likes to comment on this, but unless you're into the chiller business on the roof, does anyone have an update if the thing seems to be working?
Yes, we've been very pleased.
Okay, well, good. We're getting chilled. Let's move to, Kim, are you going to make it?
I am, I'm all ready.
Well, let's go.
Okay, let's go, let's have at it. So I am pleased to say things are moving along with Phase 1 of our capital projects plan. And the, over, since the last board meeting, we've been spending most of our time researching potential sites for our new build branches, so that's been taking up some time. We're also continuing to discuss the CMC and BOT project delivery methods with Veridus and our architects. And speaking of our architects, we're very close to getting Pete and Ted a contract. It's taken a bit to have everybody look at it, to make it as perfect as possible before it gets to them. So you both will be getting a copy pretty shortly. And we have been fortunate that both our lead architects from Lumina and Group 4, without a contract, have been sitting in on our meetings as a courtesy to us, so we appreciate that. So that is what I have, as of today.
Any questions? Things are moving and moving positively, which is good to hear. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
We now address the gates up all the time, and one of these days they'll go down and we'll get some revenue. So let's look at the main library parking proposal.
Sure, I will do a brief introduction and then turn it over to our friends at ABM Parking. Thank you for being here today. So we do have a proposal for a new parking vendor for us to consider, for you to consider, and also for a revision to our current parking procedure and policy. So let me explain why we are coming to ask for a change. First and foremost, the goal of our parking lots is to make sure that we have ample parking for both our patrons of the library and for our staff. And we have found that particularly of late, that has come at a premium. Sometimes positions are really limited, even just as an example, I was coming back this afternoon from a meeting and had a hard time finding a place to park myself. So we know parking is a premium out there. Also, particularly in light of upcoming budget changes due to pending legislation, we're thinking more and more about how to recover some cost of operation without creating an undue barrier to service to our patrons. And we do know that maintaining our parking lots does come at a cost to the library. So is there a responsible, low-barrier way to recover some of those costs? So we are proposing a change to how we handle parking here at the main library. Currently, parking is available at the main library for $1 per hour, up to $7 daily. However, library cardholders receive unlimited free parking during both open and closed library hours. So if you have a library card, you can park basically 24/7 for free. We are proposing some changes to that. We are proposing that effective August 1st, 2025, parking fees do remain at $1 an hour, up to $7 daily. I did include in your packet a comparison of other parking fees throughout downtown Fort Wayne. That's very comparable, if not very favorable for us. ACPL cardholders would, in this new system, receive up to three hours free parking per day at main during regular main library hours. After those three hours, the $1 per hour charge, up to that $7 max daily, would go into effect. Both cardholders and non-cardholders would pay $1 per hour, up to $7 daily, during times the main library was closed. So if you're coming downtown for an event, for a dinner on a Saturday night, no matter whether you have a library card or not, you would need to pay to use a library lot. And we, as the library staff, would work with ABM Parking to make arrangements in the case of special circumstances where we may want to offer free parking during an event or a program. An example might be our annual Night at the Library event that we had last month. That may be a situation where we determine that anyone who's purchased a ticket to this fundraiser should be able to park for free, and we can work with our parking vendors to make that happen. And I will turn it over to ABM to give a brief presentation, and then we're happy to answer any questions. We have our security manager, Shannon, here as well, who has been very involved in this process.
Thank you for that introduction. As Shannon said, this was a presentation we put together in response to the request for information. First, I'd like to introduce Dustin McAvoy. He's our local operations manager for our parking operations here in Fort Wayne. Jeff Russell is our branch manager, our branch that oversees Southern Ohio and Indiana and Kentucky. And I'm Matt Witten, I'm the Business Development Director. Just to tell you a little bit about ABM, we're publicly traded. There's a lot we do beyond parking, but in the parking space, we manage $2 billion in annual parking revenue for our clients. You know, I won't read all the bullet points unless that's necessary. I think everyone has a copy. We're a Level 1 merchant for credit cards, PCI compliance, financial transparency, those things are of utmost importance to us, parking over a million vehicles a day. And like I said earlier with Dustin and his team, we do oversee a significant amount of the parking for the city and the redevelopment authority here in Fort Wayne. This was just an agenda as a response to the items we were asked to address through the RFI, mostly how the solution that Shannon, or that Susan mentioned would work. As you've seen in some of our lots in the city, this is what a text-to-pay sign looks like. There's also a scan-to-pay with the QR code. We've actually set up this QR code to actually work, if you want to scan it from the screen or scan it from your packet. But patrons would enter the parking lot or the garage, scan the QR code, or they could text the number provided on the signage, select the amount of stay that they'd like. We would include a separate signage inside the facility for the library patrons, so they could take advantage of the three hours at no charge. And then the only thing is they would need to know what their license plate number was. So you enter your license plate, you pay by your license plate. Dustin and his team would enforce the parking via our parking enforcement team. Time can be extended. This, and this was a little bit, we talked about a project timeline, what it would take to get this onboarded. There's a lot we could do immediately. We could take over the, with the existing system. We could start making sure we're operational during baseball games. And the biggest part of the timeline would be getting an agreement in place and ordering the signage. So not a whole lot of capital expenditure or anything like that. It's as simple as ordering, you know, the right amount of signs, and we would work with you on where those need to be, and what they, what that verbiage would look like, if there needs to be signage in alternative languages or things like that. Those are all options that we can do to make this the most accessible. And...
Questions? How does it work if I have, if I'm a library patron and I park in the lot, do I scan my card to get, or, well, I have a card. How does that work so that you know I'm a real library goer, as opposed to dropping in to the parking lot, doing whatever I do with my card, so I'm make-believe in the library, but I go across the street and have a drink?
There's a couple ways to address that. The QR codes, I think theoretically, the QR codes that are going to be placed in the lot are the pay codes.
Could you speak up, please?
Yeah. The QR codes that are going to be placed in the lot will be used to pay, to actually make payments. The library patrons can actually come in, and there'll be a separate QR code for them to scan, and they'll be able to utilize that three hours free parking to make sure that they're not coming down doing exactly what you said, scanning the code and getting three hours for free.
Well, I'm still confused. How does it know that I'm a library, my library card is?
The fact that you have to come into the library, it does not 100% know that you're a library patron. If you technically wanted to park your car in a library lot, walk inside the library, scan it, get three hours free, and then go across the street, it would not know that.
I see.
It definitely, and there might be some isolated cases of that. The general idea is to capture the majority of the people that follow the system. There's always those exceptions that you're going to run into from time to time with a gateless system.
So I have a question. So Jeff, there's no gate. What's to keep people from just heading out? I'm not paying attention. My kids are in the backseat screaming. I just go out. Sounds like there's a camera, and I get a bill that says, oh, I owe money?
No, no, it's not. So what we'll do is, we'll send our own patrol officers around, and when you pay, when you scan that QR code and you pay, this is a, this is a pay on when you arrive. You schedule your time. And if you're a library patron and you say you're going to be here for three hours, you scan the code, it asks you your license plate number, you put that information in, and then it registers that plate number. We have our personnel, which come around and patrol the lots, and they check those plate numbers. If that's a valid plate number, and it's done the registration that it needs to do, or if it's out on the outside lot and it's, and it's paid, everything's good. If not, we go ahead and issue a citation at that point in time, which will be due and payable, and that'll go through a normal citation process, if that makes sense. There, there are times that you run into issues where people didn't understand the process, and there will be a learning curve. You know, there will be a learning curve with people that, you know, get a ticket and they're like, hey, I thought I had to pay on the way out, because that's how it is. And the good part about that is, in our citations, we have an online appeal process. We have an office here locally. We'll have their, our contact information available there to try and get that information out. The key point of this whole system is to educate the patrons. As we, as we go through and do this, we don't just want to kind of flip a switch. We want to kind of put some signage out and say, hey, this is coming soon, there's going to be changes to it. Get an information pamphlet out that we can distribute to, you know, readily, to people coming and going, to get them understanding that something different's coming. And then our personnel, Dustin and some of his personnel, will be present during the first couple weeks, probably for the first month on a regular basis, going through and trying to educate. We're not looking to try and, you know, write a bunch of parking tickets and collect a bunch of money. That's not the idea. The idea is to educate people and get them to follow the new policies and procedures that are being put in place.
So once you get, if you don't mind my following up?
No.
So, once we've done this in place for a month or two, how often are you folks on site actually monitoring?
We vary enforcement routes. It can be as many as six or seven times a day, or it can be three or four times a day. It also depends on, you know, we have somebody on staff that's going around on a regular basis.
So every day?
Correct.
Sometimes someone's coming?
Correct, yes.
Six to eight, I would say is accurate.
How many lots do you currently have in the city?
Seventeen. Seventeen facilities for the city, counting surface lots and garages.
And garages?
Yes.
Where, where would I see an example of that?
Of, are the garages we manage?
Yeah.
The Harrison Garage at the Tin Caps, the Plaza Garage, Rousseau Building, the New Star Garage, the Riverfront Promenade Garage, the Civic Garage?
I got it.
All of those are us.
Lot of garages.
All of them.
So I had one other question. In your presentation, you gave us a set fee and then profit sharing or split on revenue. I got the impression you're doing a study and you may be looking at something different than that? Is that correct?
Yeah, and we're, we're very open to doing it as more of a percentage base, if that's what we want to do right off the bat, doing a percentage of the revenue up to a certain amount, and then you guys can have everything above that. You know, we have some base operating expenses that we need to cover, but it doesn't necessarily have to be a flat fee. We are negotiable on that and can open up that conversation in even more detail. We've kind of had some of those preliminary conversations, but we can, we can definitely entertain those. So it's a much lower risk. I think the revenue is there based upon what we're seeing as far as the traffic and who's parking there, and, you know, there's not a lot of options for them to go, so they're going to have to pay somebody. So hopefully it's, they'll remain there and...
And there's no cash that's handled?
No, this will be 100% cashless. Which is very, very similar. I think there's only, what, Civic Center Garage is the only one that still takes cash by the, by the convention center. Yeah, so there's only two facilities that actually still even take cash. Yeah, so there's only two facilities that actually still even take cash. And again, it's through automated machines, but it's, it's all credit card. Everybody, a lot of folks are, have migrated to that. They want to play with their phone. They use Apple Pay, Google Pay, all the different payment services that are out there. And it's, it's very efficient for revenue collection. It's also efficient from an accounting and accounting aspect as far as security of those funds and low risk to anyone working. You know, you don't have anybody walking around with cash.
Remind me to ask another question. What technically has to be done with our gates and our thing? Does it have to be reprogrammed?
No, I, I think with the, the, the idea behind it is, you know, in the garage, talking specifically about the garage, is the top gates would just maintain and they would just be used for traffic control. So you would pull up and they would just open and then people would just follow the signage. Yeah.
Answer that question?
So basically what will happen with our gates, we will just remove those, the ones that they come in that are currently just up in the air right now. We will no longer have those. What he was referring to in the parking garage, we have the bottom entry gate that opens and closes to slow patrons, the vehicles down as they come in. And then we have the one at the top of the ramp that slows the cars from going out for pedestrians walking by on the sidewalk. We, those will remain because obviously it's a safety hazard and that's what we want. We want to make sure patrons are safe and the cars coming down, people are safe down there. So those two will remain in effect in the parking garage. Those are the only two gates that will remain. Everything else will be removed. And I think that's just a matter of having our maintenance team and probably H and L maybe might have to just because some of the electrical equipment in there. But, I mean, everything's shut off now in it. Outside of the cameras are working, but other than that, it's there, so.
And how are our employees going to get through? How does that work?
So we will, every, all the employees will give us their license plate number. So, and that will be any license plate number of the vehicle they may drive into work. We will give that information to ABM and they will have that in their log. So if, like I said, if I drive my husband's vehicle, they'll have the information and we will not be charged.
Does the towing policy change as a result of this?
So, do you guys want to answer that?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I mean, in, in basic, we would have to discuss that policy with you guys. I don't know what's your current policy, what your current towing policy is. We have, you know, typically a three strikes and you're out policy. But Indiana does have some, some, some towing things where there has to be notices in a 24-hour period and, and things along that type of nature. So that, that's something that is going to definitely require more of an in-depth discussion about.
What have you found would go wrong with a system like yours?
The, the only thing that I, I would say that is difficult is transitioning to getting individuals to understand that it is pay when you arrive. Because some people have the understanding that, hey, I went here before. They're not familiar with a lot of the other downtown parking operations. So they don't pay when they get there. They don't understand that and they end up with a citation. We have to educate them and, and show them how to do it. That, that is one of the, that's probably the number one issue with that.
And a citation is issued by the municipality?
No, it's issued by us as a, as a private operator, ABM.
I don't know if anyone knows the answer to this, but what percentage of our patrons spend more than three hours here?
The ones that drive, not too many.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, maybe genealogy, they're here. Kurt was actually in on these conversations at one point and he said the ones that are here, like doing the family research that are here every day, he says they need to pay for parking as well.
He has said that we have had genealogy out-of-town patrons remark about how affordable our parking is. So he was included in all these conversations and did not see an issue with his side of the house at all.
Remind, what I'm hearing though is for most of our patrons, this is not an expense to them at all.
Yeah, most, yeah, like I said, most of our patrons are not here longer than that. And we have talked about making exceptions for different events, like, you know, like when they have an event here, a large event that they pay for parking ahead of time, you know, we'll make arrangements for that, so.
That brings up a question. I was at the Roland lecture. If, if there is a lecture like that, can it differentiate those that are attending the lecture, free parking? Or if we have a fundraiser, as Susan mentioned, can you differentiate that?
Yeah, we would get with ABM with, and do some, we will figure out some kind of like either a new code to scan for them to, you know, for you guys to scan when you came in and that way it would just wipe that as far as free parking. Same thing with our contractors that come in here. Jake, that was one question that Jake had. Same with myself. When we have our contractors that come in here, Train, Corson and stuff about that, we would just, they would have their license plate number. I asked about Corson because we have different, you know, ones that come in here. Like Corson, it would just be their truck instead of giving license plate number. We don't always know which ones are going to come in here. So they would automatically know the trucks and they would just, you know, they'd be free parking.
Any other questions, folks? Michael, Paul?
Is there a contract that's been reviewed? I'm sorry, a minute.
Has that been negotiated yet?
It has not fully been negotiated yet. We would want our legal team to take a look at it, of course. Oh, go ahead.
How much time will there be between? Before starting it, what are we going to be doing so that, are we going to have things on the radio saying something or on TV or whatnot? Or on the newspaper or all of it?
Yeah, we'll have a communications plan for friends to let them know.
And signage in the lots, which ABM has agreed to help us with. That'll be key.
Further questions, comments? Do you fellas have anything else to add?
No, we just appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
It's a very competitive process. We're seeing 12 other vendors. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on now then to the summer learning program.
Well, Ben, I, I think what we were hoping to ask for tonight would be for the board to take a vote, and I'm looking at our legal counsel to see if this is what they would recommend, to approve the parking policy.
Concept?
The parking proposal as presented and to agree for me to enter into an agreement with ABM pending review from our legal team. Does that?
Sounds right to me, yeah.
All right, then. You heard what Susan said.
I don't make motions.
Any further discussion? I guess it's not that competitive. You guys won. All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed by nay? Okay, we have something to work with.
Great, thank you. And thank you so much, ABM. We look forward to working with you.
Likewise, thank you.
And thank you, Shannon.
Now our summer learning program.
Where would you like Jackie? Would you like her at the podium?
I think the podium would be good. Jackie Foolwood, our Youth Services Manager, is going to give you an update on everything that is happening this summer. It has been a very busy summer so far, very successful, and I look forward to hearing Jackie's update.
Thank you. As Susan said, I am Jackie. I'm your Youth Services Manager and I'm here to talk to you about Summer Learning Program 2025. This year's slogan is Color Our World. It is based around the theme of colors and the visual arts. Really quickly, assuming that everything loads all right, we're going to watch the short promotional video that our marketing team made for us.
This summer, unleash your creativity and color our world at the Allen County Public Library. From June 1st to July 31st, join our summer learning program and discover the artist within you. Find your rhythm, let music move you, and celebrate the art of sound. Dance into your imagination, craft your worlds, and bring color to life through creativity. Earn prizes by reading, creating, and shaping the world around you. Your creativity makes the world brighter. Visit acpl.info/summer and start making your mark today.
Our marketing department also designed our very adorable summer shirts. If you would like to order one, they're available in our merch store. All right, so the Summer Learning Program, as many of you probably know, is open to all ages and abilities. And the entire point of it is to incentivize summer reading and learning during those weeks when kids are out of school. It includes educational entertaining programs and presenter performers that we don't have during the rest of the year. This is to give access to learning opportunities for our youth and families, again, when they're out of school. There is no requirement to have a library card for this program. They do not need to have internet access at home. They do not need to spend any money to be a part of it. It is a very low-barrier, high-quality program. Participation has not really changed since last year. It works the same way. So they can do active learning activities or they can read the old-fashioned way. We all did summer reading when we were kids. All they have to do is track their participation one time each day. We're trying to build a daily habit of reading and learning. This allows for open-ended choice, so they can decide they're just going to read all summer, they're just going to practice a new hobby, pick up a new skill, hopefully through some nonfiction books from the library. Or they can do a combination of those two things. It's up to them. Because it's so flexible, it works for all ages and abilities, allowing everyone to participate in the same program together. We have flexible tracking options as well. They can track on paper, or they can track digitally, or they can do a hybrid of both things. We just want to make everything as easy and accessible to families as we can. Our incentives this year are pretty cool. So kids can get a free book after 15 days, 30 days, and 45 days of reading or learning. Adults can get a book sale voucher for our Friends of the Library Book Sale at Day 15 and 30. At Day 45, adults can also get a free book to take home. At that Day 45 level, everybody, regardless of age, gets this tote bag to put their books and other fun stuff from summer in. It says, "Color our world with books." And the really cool thing about this tote bag is that you can color the tote bag with crayons. So everybody's going to get a little tiny box of crayons as well. And since it's June and I'm presenting to you, we've already been running the program for almost a month now, so I can give you an update on numbers. At the bottom, you'll see our total from last year, which was almost 17,000 registrants. Right now, we are at almost four, well, as of a week ago, we were at almost 14,000 registrants. So we're very close to that total from last year and we've still got about half the program to go. As you can see, that six-to-12-year-old bread and butter age gap or age group is leading the charge here. And then one thing I really do want to point out is that group signups have increased 100% over last year. So last year, we had about half of this number. And the reason that it's gone up so much is because I asked staff to please market this program to their daycares, their summer camps, their summer schools that are nearby. And also to tell them, when you hit your prize goals, we can bring books to you for your kids. You don't have to come into the library and pick up 60 books at a time. We're going to take care of it for you. And they've been very receptive to that, as you can see from our increase. We have amazing local presenters, some favorite, favorites who are back from previous years. This picture, the man in the blue shirt is a DJ, DJ Too Quick, who owns Allen Entertainment. And you can see how fascinated our children at our Pontiac branch were by his program. Other favorites include Indiana Wild, Fort Wayne Museum of Art, Science Central, and more. We also have some of our local partner presenters back. That includes the Fort Wayne Community Schools Nutrition Processing Center. That's the department that runs free lunch and snack. They also bring out fruits and vegetables and do fruit and vegetable tastings at the sites where we have free lunch and snack. Project Reads comes out and reads with kids at some of our branches. And this year, Fort Wayne Parks and Rec is bringing their Park and Play Program around. That's a program where they pull up with a van, they unload it, they put out large toys for kids to play with and experience, and then they go to another site. We also had some big out-of-town headliners this year. We had a family concert last week with Jim Gill. If you're not familiar with him, he is quite iconic in the library and early childhood world. He is a play expert and a musician. He does professional development for librarians and educators. And his family concerts are these just amazing, active, no real sitting down, moving and jumping and dancing joyful experiences. So we had a wonderful time with him. This week, the artist slash musician slash inventor slash delightful human being, Camry Ivory, has been going around to some of our branches. She invented Coloratura, Coloratura? Coloratura. It is a set of paintbrushes connected to a MIDI controller. And when you paint with these brushes, there are different notes and instrumental sounds that play. So as you're painting, you're also creating a soundscape. It's pretty amazing. And of course, it's wonderful to have the inventor herself out there to talk about that process. She owns a patent on this system and she's just delightful with the kids. And then finally, we had Story Circus with Yasu Ishida. He was here last year. We caught part of his show today and I was really impressed by how much new content he's added. So even though we've got the same person coming back, people are seeing a new show. He's a storyteller. He's a magician. He's an origami artist and he's a Japanese street theater performer. And he combines all of these elements into about a 40-minute, just fun-packed show. Shifting gears, we are running our usual partnerships to address food insecurity this year. Blessings in a Backpack is back with us again. They were able to fund twice the amount of food that they were able to fund last year. So as of last Friday, we had sent home 3,653 bags of food with kids to have some food security for them over the weekend. Our Fort Wayne Community Schools partnership to provide free lunch and snack at eight of our branches continues. So far, we have given out, I think, around 6,000 lunches and 2,000 snacks. Just let those numbers sink in for a minute. That is a lot of kids we're feeding. Team Read is, of course, our beloved community program by which we hire teenagers and we transport them around the county to read to younger kids in congregate childcare settings. Most of these settings are at the Parks Department. We also see Boys and Girls Club and a couple of YMCA sites. This year, we have hired 43 teens. Nine of them are returning and they've got four adults who go around and supervise them. This program gives them job skills. We give them some professional development opportunities. And then it's also wonderful for the children that they're seeing because they get to make this bond with this older kid who they think is the coolest person they've ever met. And they'll see that same older kid every week through the summer and they will get a free book. The book that they read with the teen, they get to keep and take home. So they'll have seven free books at the end of summer. It's a great way for the teens to connect with the community. I think I said already that we have 15 sites and it runs for seven weeks. So at this point, we're a little bit over halfway through the program. And the personal growth that we've seen in the teenagers is enormous. It's really inspiring. It's maybe one of the most inspiring library programs I've seen in my career. And then finally, I did want to give some context to how much effort goes into summer learning. So the Youth Services Department, which is my department, plans and coordinates it. This is then presented by Public Services, which is main in all of our branches. So they're putting the program in the hands of kids and families. They're also doing their own programming. Our marketing department designs all of the promotional materials. I mentioned some of their work already. Our events team helps support major performers who come in. Our Material Support Services Department deals with prize distribution, collection services, orders prizes, human resources, supports Team Read, or we wouldn't be able to do it. And our logistics department makes sure everything gets delivered. I forgot to put on here the Programming and Partnerships Department that not only steers adult programming during the summer, but also coordinates the adult part of the summer learning program. So this is a giant lift and it's really moving to me, I think, to see everybody in the library come together because we all agree that it is worth providing these learning opportunities to kids and this is vital to our families over the summer. So if you want to see an example of great teamwork, just come look at us putting summer together. And finally, I want to say thank you to the Fulinger Foundation. They have generously supported us for 40 years. This is our 40th anniversary with them. Their first donation to us was in 1985. And then we also get some support from the Friends of the Library and the Allen County Public Library Foundation. All right, that's my presentation. Does anybody have any questions? If I told you everything you'd ever want to know about summer, then some probably.
Yes.
So, so how does our participation measure up against industry benchmarks?
I would say that it's very hard to find an industry benchmark because you have giant libraries like San Francisco, who are all participating in one program, or Miami Dade that has something like 40 branches. And then you'll have your standalone hometown library, where there's 1,000 kids in town and all 1,000 of those kids are participating because maybe they're very remote and that's just what you do in summer. I can say for context, I worked in a similarly sized library before I was here. We usually ran about 10,000 to 12,000 registrations in the summer. This was the Dayton metro area. It's about the same size as the Fort Wayne area, so we run ahead of them. But otherwise, I don't have a lot of data on that.
Is there any way of checking with?
Is there any way of checking with the schools, performance of the child, the summer hiatus, and then next year's performance, and those that have gone through the program, and those that haven't, and the slippage that might occur?
There have been a couple of libraries who have managed to do that. It is very difficult because of FERPA, being able to get access to student records, being able to share data, and sometimes you can get a small school district to agree to participate, but you can't get all of your school districts to agree. So we cover a lot of school districts. We cover parochial schools. We have homeschoolers. So we might be able to see that for a couple of schools, but it won't be able to be a big enough sample size likely to take into account all the variables, but it's something we could have discussion with schools about in the future, if there's interest.
I noticed your beginning in your introduction, you talked about children and adults. Are the children and adults commingled in any way, or are they separate programs? And the reason I ask is for the protection of our children.
So the way our programs work, we do have some what we call all-ages programs, but those are really what we used to call family programs, and we changed the name to all-ages to show that a nanny could also come with kids. It doesn't have to necessarily be people who are blood relatives. Aside from those programs, which are bigger headliners like our family concert, where we would expect it to be drawing kids and their adults who are accompanying them, programs are either for kids, or they're for adults. And then there are for kids within fairly narrow age band. So for example, we have teen programs. Only teenagers go to teen programs. We have storytimes. You're only going to see families with little kids at those programs, so you wouldn't have, say, an adult who's by themselves say, "Oh, I just want to drop in and watch this storytime." We would ask them to please attend instead an adult program that was appropriate for their age.
Thank you. That's great.
Yes, sir.
I have a question, but I want to ask you. I have a comment first. Is it fair to say that Fort Wayne Community Schools is one of our sponsors because they're providing three thousand lunches and two thousand snacks as part of this program?
So I would say that they are a partner. What they are providing, they are paying for their staffing for the program, but the actual food is provided through USDA grant. So this is the same program that provides free and reduced-price lunches in schools during the school year. This is the extension of it into the summer. So we consider them a partner. They are providing the food. They are providing staffing to get it served. We are providing them locations to be able to serve it, and we are providing the kids who are in our branches a place to come and have it. So it's just community collaboration.
Thank you. That was a comment, but I did have a question.
Yes.
And that is, so what's your biggest challenge? What's holding us back, or what would take us to another level? What's the biggest challenge?
Oh, goodness. I guess I haven't thought of it that way. I've more thought of what plans would be. I'd say the biggest challenge in summer, and really in everything with the library, is just the challenge of getting the message out, which our marketing team does a great job of doing. I do think that I would like to see us partnering more with other organizations in the summer to do more joint opportunities, because then they can spread the word through their network. We can spread the word through our network, and everyone is coming together to support kids together.
Thank you.
With the cost reduction, Elon Musk and all of that stuff, are we using, do we have available to us less funding, or was that last year's allocation that can't be cut?
So the Fulinger Grant is a three-year grant. We are in the second year of the grant cycle. The money for each of those three years is the same, and then we will go out for the grant again at the end of the grant cycle and see what happens then. Hopefully, wonderful things.
Awesome.
And the Friends of Foundation funding has been steady as well.
Yes.
Well, that's terrific. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for presenting. If there are no more questions?
I do have a comment because I think it speaks to the inclusiveness of our program. So Aja and I were having a conversation earlier this week with a mom of three. She has three children, and she was here to actually film my talk show, but she was also here to claim summer learning prizes for her family. And she has three children, and one of them has a developmental issue that makes traditional reading a challenge for him. And she was so grateful that our program allowed all different types of learning and experiences, so the entire family could participate together. It was very touching what she said, and she was just so grateful that we were so thoughtful and intentional with how we structured our program. So thank you.
Did you wait till now to tell me that because you thought you'd get me to tear up? Because it's not working, Susan. Good try.
I really wasn't, I didn't want any tears, but I thought it was important that the board and the public should hear that.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Well, thank you again. We're ready for the executive director's report.
We are. Well, first of all, she's going to kill me, but I'm going to do it anyway. Today is a very special day because literally, to the day, it is Jill Knowles' thirtieth work birthday. She has her thirtieth work anniversary today, so congratulations, Jill. We've been celebrating her. Yes, she can tell me later. Yeah. We're very proud of her. Lots of accomplishments these past few months with a successful audit and the thirtieth work anniversary and all the good things, so.
Yeah, it started when I was ten, can't you tell?
I was going to say. That's great. Happy birthday.
Happy work birthday. A lot of other things going on. So on June seventeenth, the Audio Reading Service held its annual volunteer recognition luncheon. We had about, I'm going to look at that, about a hundred there, would you say?
Yes, about a hundred and six.
Hundred and six. It was lovely, as always. We did something really nice for Bruce Haynes. As you probably know, he is the recently retired president and general manager of PBS Fort Wayne. PBS has been and continues to be such a supporter of the Audio Reading Service program, and Bruce himself is a volunteer reader and will continue to do that post-retirement. But we gave him a special award, and our staff 3D-printed for him Big Bird, because PBS, and painted it for him, and all of us signed it for him, and he was really, really touched. It was very nice. Access Fort Wayne is branching out. I am really excited about this. So you may be aware that starting in July, there is a new state law regarding municipalities and recording of their public meetings. We were approached by Monroeville, who previously had not been streaming and recording their town council meetings and needed a provider for that. We negotiated with them, and starting next month, we will be providing via Access Fort Wayne filming, live-streaming, and video hosting services for their monthly town council meetings for a mutually agreed-upon fee. So we're really grateful to be able to provide that service, and thanks to our staff at Access Fort Wayne for making that happen.
How do the citizens access that?
They can access it like anybody watching our board meeting can. They can access it on YouTube, and then it will also, it will be live on YouTube, and it will also, I believe, I'm looking at Access Fort Wayne, will it be on the channel? It will be on the channel. But I think most people will get it via YouTube.
YouTube.
Yep. Tomorrow at ten-thirty, I'm looking at Aja, I have that time right, don't I? Great, ten-thirty. If you want to meet us on the plaza, we are unveiling a new round of limited-edition library cards featuring local artwork with a downtown Fort Wayne mural walk. So we're going to meet on the plaza, and we're going to walk around downtown and look at murals and see some of these murals featured on our new library cards. We celebrated at the Maine Library World Refugee Day on June twentieth in partnership with several great organizations, Catholic Charities, St. Joseph Community Health Foundation, Amani Family Services, International House, and we had multicultural performances and family-friendly events. It was very well-received and well-attended. Our Assistant Genealogy Services Manager, Elizabeth Hodges, she represents the library on the Allen County Committee for America Two Fifty, which is a nonpartisan initiative working to encourage every American in commemorating the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of our country next year. So commemorative events began in Allen County this month. Our genealogy staff led a cemetery walk at Lindenwood Cemetery. Those are some of our most popular programs. People love a cemetery walk. And also, we were present at the America Two-hundred-and-fiftieth Allen County Kickoff Ceremony on Flag Day at the History Center. And finally, which is very useful on a day like today, the Maine Library is included as an official designated cooling center for the city of Fort Wayne this year. The Maine Library is considered an official cooling center, but to be fair, all of our locations are used as unofficial cooling centers throughout the summer, particularly on weeks like this week.
What does that entail?
Honestly, it's just publicity that we are open. It doesn't involve us changing our hours or providing anything more than keeping our doors open like we normally do. It's just a matter of being listed in official city communication about places where people can go for air conditioning. And that's all I got.
Well, thank you. Any questions?
Susan, is there any update on the Dolly Parton funding?
Thank you, Ben. Ben, Jim, very, very good question. We have about sixty-eight hundred children signed up, and it grows every day. We are still fundraising here at the local level. I feel like I can say this in a public meeting because I've had plenty of emails about it, but we have received word from the PNC Charitable Trust that we will be receiving a donation from them. So when that donation arrives, we'll be making a public announcement about that. Glorious Group Area, which stands for Allen County Retired Educators Association, they dropped off a very generous donation just yesterday to us. So the local fundraising for our local match continues. We have been told by the state that there is still funding for the state match for about another year. It has been dropped from future state budgets, and our First Lady is ongoing with her fundraising efforts to meet that gap.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Is there any old business that should come before this body? Any new business? How about public comment? You will come up to the microphone if you would, give us your name, address, and we'll listen. Yeah, that's live.
Hi. My name's Joe Renner. I'm a resident here in Fort Wayne. Don't live but three blocks from here. About just over a year ago, I was involved in an incident here where I was recording in public, just recording in the library. At that time, I wasn't aware that you had a no-recording policy, but apparently, the no-recording policy was actually enforced pretty strongly. I contacted Ms. Byer here, and she told me that the policy was not enforced, that people are allowed to record in a public library. And what I was doing is I was recording basically a highlight video of the public library, so I was promoting, giving you free promotion of the library. I've never had any complaints or anything when I was in the library. It was pretty much four to six security guards approached me and insisted that I stopped recording. Of course, I was exercising my First Amendment rights to record in public places. This is a governmental subdivision. Unfortunately, your security officer or security director, Ms. Acker, she called the police because I was simply exercising my rights in public. I wasn't causing any problems. I wasn't focusing in on anybody. I wasn't recording children or anything of the sort. My video's publicly available. You can see it anytime you want. But she did call the police. Two young officers responded, and they lacked a lot of training because they enforced policy rather than enforcing the law. I opted not to file a lawsuit, and the reason I did that is because I'm not in this for the lawsuit. I'm not in this for the money. I'm in this to educate the public, and that's what the library's all about. It's always, it's been about that my entire life. And so I was attempting to educate the public, and I ended up getting banned for a year simply for exercising my rights in a public place, trying to promote the library. I want to thank you for reviewing your library policies because that's exactly what I was hoping to do. I'm sorry. I did not know my alarm was going to go up there. I want to thank you for reviewing your policies. At least that shows me, anyway, that you're actually concerned about it and you're interested in knowing what's going on. There are some aspects of your new policy that you might want to take a look at because recording of public employees, which librarians are, anybody who works for the Allen County Public Library is a public employee. We're, public's allowed to record public servants in the course of their duties. This has been proven in court time and time again. Again, I'm here to help educate you folks because I don't want that to happen to somebody else, you know? And that was really, really disheartening to me to find that the library didn't respect my rights. And that's the way I felt. I know it's not true now. I know that's not true because you did review the policy. But what did concern me, I think, more than that, was the fact that I sent each member of this board an email. Each member of this board, and not one of you reached out to contact me about it. Not one of you cared enough to call and say, "Hey, I'm sorry this happened. Let's talk about it," you know, or anything. I contacted Ms. Byer. Ms. Byer left it up to Ms. Acker. Ms. Acker doesn't know a governmental subdivision from a housing addition, so she couldn't help at all. And you just kept burying yourselves more and more and more, and it seemed like you were just dwelling on the ignorance, and I don't understand why. And I wanted to thank you for at least reviewing that, and please review the points that I mentioned previously. There are court cases out there that, it's already decided law. I mean, like I said, I'm out to save you guys money by doing this because there are journalists out there like me who would rather sue you than educate you. And I don't, that's my money, too, because I put my money into this community. I live here, and I don't want to see that happen. I don't want to see that happen to our law enforcement, and I don't want to see that happen to our library. So please feel free to reach out to me for anything. I'd be happy to help you. I mean, like I said, I'm here to educate, and that is all. So again, thank you very much for reviewing your policies. I do appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
You might want to review it a little bit more and compare it with case law. And one very last thing that I'd like to mention is that I came here to get an Indiana Access to Public Information request form, and I'm allowed to do that in the state of Indiana in person. I was told that I would have to contact the Allen County Public Library's attorney to get an Access to Public Information form. Now, I have no problem filling out your forms. I mean, I'm happy with that, but requiring members of the public to email your attorney in order to get that form is, it's not right, and I believe it's not legal either. So again, something for you to look at. I'd appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Who do you work for? What's your main outlet?
I'm an independent journalist. My outlet is called Allen County Constitutionalist. I have about two hundred thousand viewers at this point, constantly growing. So again, I want to send out a positive message about our community and the establishments in it, especially our governmental establishments, because, you know, we're representing government, you know? And how can you represent somebody if you don't even bother to return an email, which is kind of silly.
Well, typically, I don't respond because that's kind of the direction the board has taken, with one voice.
Right.
You know, you don't want to have every board member responding to you.
Right.
I do understand that.
You do want to speak out with one voice, and I completely agree with that. You want to speak with one voice. But from what I understand is that if you had no, if you wanted to speak out with one voice, you could at least contact me back to acknowledge that you received it and that it's something that you're going to discuss.
Right.
I feel like that would have been appropriate. I mean, to completely ignore me, completely alienated me, and to be honest, it drove me in the opposite direction from being a supporter of the Allen County Public Library to being against the Allen County Public Library because you're not representing the people who have constitutional and protected rights. And so without responding to me, I just went the opposite direction. You know, I have had a change of heart simply because, like I said, I love the library. I love what you do. You help the community so much. You really do. But you have to be responsive to the people and our concerns. And my concern is that I was, I had men with guns called on me for taking pictures in a public library, and that's wrong. It's just wrong. So any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone?
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Anyone else from the public that would like to comment? Please give us your name and your residence, and we'll be happy to listen to you.
Okay. My name is Rose Marie Shaw. I live at twelve fifteen California Avenue. I have been told by a young lady behind a glass cage in the genealogy historical area that I needed to speak with the that I needed to speak with the library council. Okay? And she gave me the paperwork that led me to this meeting today. I requested because I am teaching my grandson to do research, and we were researching a historical event, and we were told, I was, I requested that I could take him to some other information. We had been to the youth area, and I was very surprised at how little information is in the teen section. So we went to, now he's 14, so he's kind of in between high school and grammar school. And so when we went to the lower grade levels, it was just too elementary. So I asked if I could have access to the storage unit, which I know is down there because my husband designed it and built it when we were digging the hole that put this building on top of it. And I know there's a lot of books and other materials down there. But I am not allowed to go down there and see what's in there. There's no catalog system that shows me what is in the storage unit. And why have we spent money on these books and materials to have them stored away from the people who purchased them? The public. And so I am here to make my request known that I am not alone. We would like to have access to those materials. It is our right as owners of that material. So if you have any questions, you may ask them now. Okay? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name's Naomi. I live here in Fort Wayne. I come before you both as a taxpayer and a patron of the Allen County Public Library, and I'm deeply concerned about the library's practice of charging patrons who are taxpayers who fund this place for making photocopies of materials for research and sending out faxes on taxpayer-funded machines. I respectfully submit that this practice is inconsistent with the promises made to us as taxpayers, the principles of our state law, and the principles and policies of fairness and access that libraries just like this one stand for. Indiana Law 36-12-2-25 clearly provides that those of us who fund this library may use the facilities and services of the public library without charge for library or related purposes. What is more related, other than reading a book than making a photocopy for a school This is a powerful promise, one that recognizes that the library, as a taxpayer-supported institution, should be free and open in its use. Charging a taxpayer 10 cents per page to use a copier that their tax dollars already paid for violates the spirit of that law. Yes, the law allows the library board to set fees, but it certainly doesn't require the board to set fees, especially for essential services. Not everybody has a photographic memory, and not everybody has a copy machine at home. The question is one of should we charge our members? Not could we charge our members? In approving the library's annual budget, taxpayers have already paid for the fax machines, copiers, the paper, the toner, and the maintenance of all that is in the budget that you oversee, funded by our taxes. Library's own financial reports notes that property taxes are the main funding source and that revenues from things like photocopying are negligible. So why then are we being asked to pay a second time at the point of service? It may be called a fee, but the public feels like it's being taxed twice for the same public service. This board, in its stewardship role, should prevent such double burdens on its citizens and consider that the money collected from copy fees is a drop in the bucket on the order of the 0.1% of the library's budget. Meanwhile, the principal at stake is enormous. The library eliminated overdue fines precisely because it realized, you guys realized, that it did more harm than good. They kept people away and recovered very little revenue. This was reported on 21 Alive very thoroughly, and I saw your meeting notes. Copy fees are the same sort of impediment for a parent trying to print out job applications or student copying pages from a reference book. Those dimes add up to discouragement. I've spoken to libraries elsewhere. South Bend's library gives patrons, their members, $5 of free copies every day. Bloomington's library gives free pages too. These libraries have not gone broke. Instead, they state that they have seen increased usage and goodwill. They trust their patients, patrons, not to abuse the privilege and trust that, and that trust is repaid with respect and prudent use of these resources. By contrast, Allen County Public Library's policy right now says, essentially says to the public, "We don't trust you with our copiers unless you pay us each time." Furthermore, the $1.75 fee for a patron, taxpayer, to send a simple one-page fax, what's the going rate on the cost of sending a fax? Aside from the actual machine, which the public pays for? This provides a further reasoning that these fees are not actually founded in some cost-recovery model. And it's not here to recoup expenses to provide the relief to the public that these funds, these expenses in the first place. But it just provides a feeling that there is a scheme to generate some mediocre profit, maybe great profit, for a current undisclosed reason according to your budget sheets. And I know that is not the message that this board wants to send to the public. I know it's not. Maybe it's unrealized. The students and the teachers, such as my mother, and the researchers, and the rest of the state as a whole. I know this library, especially this board and what it's done, has quite the record in excellence in so many categories. Very impressive. I think it was amazing to research it further. And this could be your very next one. This is our library, the public's library, and its services should be as open as possible. On your website, the library states that their mission statement is that they provide materials and services free for use by all residents. Let's look up to that. In closing, I urge the board to reexamine and repeal the photocopying, printing, and faxing fee policy, especially for the members who pay taxes to fund it. It may seem like a very small issue, but small barriers can have a large symbolic and practical effects. Removing these fees would reinforce the library's role as a truly free public resource and honor the trust of these taxpayers and fall well within the library's budget capacity. I would demonstrate that this board puts the public's interest, their best interests first, and equal access first above trivial revenue streams. I ask that you leave no justification for these additional charges. The complication of adding charges and user fees onto each card for each one of your children every time you bring them here is a lot. And I have worked in credit card processing, I know that's not fee-free either. So we're paying credit card fees and credit card processing fees to just put the same amount of money on the card. We're not actually doing anything to affect it. So no justification. In truth, there is no justification strong enough to outweigh the benefit of a free and open public library. Thank you very much for your time in lending me here. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am?
Yes?
Your last name?
Mast.
Excuse me?
Naomi Mast.
How would you spell it?
M as in Mary, A-S-T.
And your address?
3769 Tree Road.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? How about over the airwaves? Any questions? None? Well, hearing none and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. We adjourn.
No move.
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those by name, we are adjourned. Thank you.
And we do have an executive session.
Yeah. Take a five-minute break.